Call the meeting in order, please stand for the flight salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The clerk call roll, please.
Counselor Elliott.
Here.
Counselor Fisher.
Here.
Counselor Furlough.
Here.
And Counselor Grisell.
Here.
Counselor Reese Kemp and Counselor Bolin are absent this evening.
Thank you. Approval of council minutes, April 13th, 2016, regular session minutes, was there any corrections or additions?
Move for approval.
Second.
Then moved and seconded to approve the April 13th council minutes, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Minutes are approved. Consent calendar, tonight we have the agenda for tonight's meeting, we have the board minutes from the library advisory board, January 12th, February 9th, Parks and Tree Committee Board, January 12th, Planning Commission, March 16th, liquor license, annual renewals, and the right-of-way dedication, Ryan Phillips Water Treatment Plant Project. And that should be it.
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Consent calendar is approved. Next up, I have two proclamations, the first one is National Police Week, May 15th through the 21st, and Peace Officers Memorial Day, May 15th. Whereas the members of the Lebanon Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of Lebanon, and whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the problems, duties, and responsibilities of their police department, and that members of our police department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life, property, and whereas nearly 60,000 assaults against law enforcement officers are reported each year resulting in approximately 16,000 injuries. Now therefore, I, Paul R. Aziz, Mayor of Lebanon, declare May 15th through the 21st, 2016, as Police Week in Lebanon, and publicly salute the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation. I further call upon all the citizens of Lebanon to observe Sunday, May 15th, as National Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families. Thank you Chief for all the work that you do and your crew, appreciate it. Next up, our exciting annual, 107th Annual Strawberry Festival, Strawberry Frontier. The proclamation, whereas 2016 marks the 107th anniversary of the Lebanon Strawberry Festival, in which we welcome thousands of visitors to our community, and whereas May 24th, 2016, marks the coronation of the Strawberry Festival Queen, and whereas the Strawberry Festival is a citywide event and recognition of this event is fitting and appropriate. Now therefore, I, Paul Aziz, Mayor of the City of Lebanon, do hereby proclaim June 2nd through June 5th, the annual Strawberry Festival, a time for fun and frolic. I solicit the cooperation of all members of the community in honoring the Queen, her court, and this year's theme of Strawberry Frontier, and the entire festival program. And it looks like we're gonna have good weather this year.
Hopefully.
Okay, next up, we'll have public comments, the council welcomes all respectful comments regarding city business, citizens may address the council by approaching the microphone, signing in, stating their name and address for the record. Each citizen is provided up to five minutes to provide comments to the council, the council may take an additional two minutes to respond, the city clerk will accept and distribute written comments at a speaker's request. Is there anybody that would like to address council? Okay, see none, we'll move into the public hearing section. Have Walt Windelowski come up, please. Good evening, my name is Paul Aziz, I am the mayor of Lebanon, will be presiding over this hearing, this is the time and the place set for the public hearing in the matter of planning file number 1603-10, a request for annexation by Robert Haas. The hearing is now open, Oregon land use law requires several items to be read into the record at the beginning of each and every public hearing, the city attorney will review this material, your patience is appreciated as he goes through these statements.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and we do have three of these annexation issues, I'm going to read the city council quasi judicial hearing procedures in full one time, and then we will reference them at the beginning of each of the next two hearings. The procedures are posted on the wall, in the back, procedures are followed to make sure that everyone has a fair opportunity to present their case and that we follow Oregon law. At the commencement of the hearing, the counselors should announce any ex parte contact or conflicts of interest. Ex parte contact is with, is contact with anyone outside the meeting or with the property itself. A conflict of interest is when a counselor or a member of the counselor's family stands to profit from the outcome of the decision in some way. We'll then have the staff report, the staff report will be presented, it should include information which staff believes is relevant to the identified criteria from the city's comprehensive plan, or land use regulations which staff believes to be relevant to the issues of the hearing. We'll then have questions of the staff by counselors. We'll then open it up to public testimony, the audience may provide oral or written testimony concerning issues relevant to the hearing. All testimony or evidence must be directed toward the criteria described in the staff report or other criteria in the comprehensive land, plan or land use regulation. Please note that failure to raise an issue, including unconstitutional issues or other issues related to the proposed condition of approval, if any, accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the council an opportunity to respond to the issues, precludes an appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals. We'll have testimony of witnesses, both proponents and opponents of the issue will be given an opportunity to provide testimony, we will start with proponents, we'll then have opponents to the application and rebuttal if necessary. We'll then close the public hearing, the hearing will be closed for deliberation by city council only, no new evidence will be allowed, discussion will be limited to the city council and staff. Generally, a decision will be made this evening, the decision will be to either approve the application where the council has found that the criteria have been proven, or deny the application if the council finds that the applicant has not sustained the burden of proof. The council may approve an application with conditions for approval which are supported by the facts and the case in the land use plans or regulations. You ask for ex parte contact or conflict of interest?
With that out of the way, I need to ask the audience if there's any objection to the notice that was sent out in this case, to the jurisdiction of this body to hear and consider this case. Okay, see none, are there any declarations of ex parte contact, conflict, or bias by any members of the council?
No.
No.
Okay. See none, we're ready for the staff report.
Okay, thank you Mayor, members of the city council, this is the first of three annexation applications this evening, we have a request by Robert Haas to annex some property and establish the mixed use zone.
I'm having a little hard time hearing you.
Yeah, I'm having difficulty speaking, so.
Okay.
Okay, how's that?
That's much better, thank you.
It's over there, thank you. Subject property is located on the east side of Tennessee Road, the total site contains a little over nine acres, extends down to the river, and includes an old concrete batch, or batching facility. The applicant is requesting the annexation of 5.13 acres that's on the west side of the property adjacent to Tennessee Road. If you look at the map that's in your packet, this would be identified as Area A. The request is simply to annex this property, and upon doing so, it would be zone mixed use. I'm working with the applicant right now for a proposed partition on the property, but that will be handled as a separate staff review. We did mail notice of this request to affected property owners as well as affected agencies, DLCD had no issue with this, we did receive, or I, I received an email from an adjacent owner, had some questions about the annexation procedure, services and impacts on farmland, I did receive a satisfactory response to the email that he felt his questions were answered, I don't think he was opposed to it, he just had some questions that needed to be addressed. In your packet, there is a adoption ordinance which includes findings, which would be in Exhibit B of the ordinance, it goes through great detail on everything that we have to address, I will simply note briefly that this property is within the UGB, adjacent to the city limits, the dog park is located to the north, it, we already have a proposal for development of the site, although that's not necessary for annexation. We do have water service to the property, but oddly enough, even though this is southeast of the treatment plant, there's no sewer service. However, during the public hearing, the, with Plan Commission Engineering Services staff indicated that there are ways that we can meet that need in the future as development occurs. As noted, upon annexation, this will be zone mixed use, and in conclusion, the commission found that this request met the criteria for an annexation, and certainly recommends council approval of the request with the establishment of the mixed use zone. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions council may have.
Any questions?
I would say that the, I think I've said this before, and on the, on the third annexation we're looking at, the city limits are in red, I just, I just find it much easier to look at, to try to, you know, when I'm looking at where is it contiguous and how does it, how does it, about the city limits.
Okay, in this particular case, on your map, there is an area A, the city limits are directly to the north of the site, and that is the dog park.
Yeah, I knew it was, I knew it touched it somewhere, I'm just, for future, I just like.
For the future, will do.
I agree, 'cause I was trying to figure it out too when I looked at it, and without having a zoning map, it was hard to tell.
Yeah, this one was impossible, the second one was difficult, the third one was easy.
Yeah.
So, I just, just for future reference.
That'll be helpful. Okay, any other questions? Thank you Walt. Next up, we'll have the applicant testimony, would the applicant like to speak?
Good afternoon, thank you for having me, I just want to say I approve of the staff report, and I've been enjoying working with the City of Lebanon.
Okay. Any questions at all? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any proponents for the annexation that would like to speak? See none, is there any opponents against the annexation that would like to speak? And no rebuttal necessary? Okay, we'll now close the public testimony, all further discussion will be limited to the council and city staff. Council discussion? See none, we'll have the city attorney read the ordinance.
Ordinance Bill number 2016-8, ordinance number 2877, a bill for an ordinance annexing and zoning property following consent filed with the city council by landowners in said area pursuant to ORS 222.120 and ORS 222.170, file 16-03014, Rob, -14, Robert Haas.
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number 2877, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Good evening, my name is Paul Aziz, I'm the mayor of Lebanon, will be presiding over the hearing, this is for the matter of planning number 160314, a request for annexation by Nick Hutmacher, Hutmacher? Do you know, is it?
Hutmacher.
Hutmacher, okay.
Yes.
The hearing is now open, Oregon land law use requires several items to be read into the record, and the city attorney will review this material.
Okay, without objection, I won't read the whole thing again, I know Rebecca that you wanted me to.
Please, no.
I will note that everybody was here when I read it the first time, and they are still posted on the walls.
Okay. With that out of the way, I need to ask the audience if there's any objection to the notice that was sent out in this case, to the jurisdiction of this body to hear and consider the case?
No.
See none, are there any declarations of ex parte contact, conflict, or bias by any members of the council?
No.
Okay. With that out of the way, we'll have the staff report.
Okay, good evening again, the second of three, this is an application, as you know, by Nick Hutmacher, to go ahead and annex property along Hansard, and if you look at the map, the property is located, Pennington Seed is to the west, so that is the connection to the city limits, so it's just north of the tracks, Pennington Seed is to the west, so, sorry about that.
Oh no.
No, no, I think your point is well taken, okay. This property is located on the east side of Hansard, and again, Pennington is to the west, it's a unusual shaped property, T-shaped, about 2.08 acres, there's access to Laurel Street to the south as well. Hansard Avenue provides all the services to the site, some additional services in Laurel as well. The applicant is simply requesting annexation of this two acre plus property into the city, upon annexation, it would be automatically zoned industrial, development of the site will be un, under a separate staff review. We did mail notice to DLCD, affected agencies and adjacent owners, and as of the time of the report or this hearing, we've received no comments. Again, the findings particular to this case are found in Exhibit B of your packet, of your adoption ordinance, again briefly, the highlights, it is within the urban growth boundary, land within the city limits is located to the west, we recognize this as land in the UGB is suitable for development, and again, we're looking at industrial property, and also necessary services are available in Hansard and to a lesser degree Laurel to serve the site. Plan Commission reviewed this at their meeting last month, and they found that the annexation request complies with the decision criteria, it's their recommendation the council approve the annexation application and establishment of the industrial zone. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Walt, looking at this, this map.
Uh huh.
It's, it's like you said, a very odd shaped, apparently, does it go the, the whole thing up above here and then kinda like a T?
It is a T-shaped.
Okay.
It is, it is.
So that's the whole thing there?
That is the whole thing.
All right.
And I am aware that the owner is trying to work with some adjacent owners to consolidate more property, but this is, this is the start, if you will.
Okay, thank you.
Sure thing.
Any other questions?
Questions?
Okay, thank you Walt.
Thank you Mayor.
Would the applicant like to speak?
No, I think Walt covered it all well.
Okay, thank you. Are there any proponents for the annexation that would like to speak? Are there any opponents of the annexation that would like to speak? Okay, we'll now close the public hearing, all testimony, the public testimony, all further discussion will be limited to the council and city staff. Council discussion? Call for motion. Oh, actually, the city attorney will read the.
Ordinance number 2016-9, ordinance number 2878, a bill for an ordinance annexing and zoning property filing, following consent filed with the city council by landowners in said area pursuant to ORS 222.120 and ORS 222.170, file 16-03-14, Nick Hutmacher.
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number 2878, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Hearing is now closed, I wish to thank everyone for tonight's public hearing, we'll move into the next hearing. Good evening, my name is Paul Aziz, I'm the mayor of Lebanon, will be presiding over this hearing, this is the time and the place set for the public hearing in the matter of planning file 16-02-09, a request for annexation by the City of Lebanon. This hearing is now open, Oregon land law use requires several items to be read into the record at the beginning of every public hearing, and the city attorney will review this material.
Same precaution as last time, the notices and requirements are still posted on the wall.
Thank you. With that out of the way, I need to ask the audience if there's any objection to the notice that was sent out in this case, as to the jurisdiction of this body to hear and consider the case? Are there any declarations of ex parte contact, conflict, or bias by any members of the council?
No.
See none, we'll move on to the staff report.
Thank you again, three for three here, we have an application by the City of Lebanon to annex some property, the attached map shows the location, we're looking at a small piece of property on the north side of Russell Drive, just opposite its intersection with Porter Street. The second piece we're looking at is a piece on south side of Russell Drive, or southwest corner, intersection of Porter and Russell Drive. In addition to that, we're looking at some right-of-way along Russell Drive, Eastern Primrose, as well as Willow Street and Taylor Street, right-of-ways that border the property on the south. Total area to be annexed is 3.48 acres. This isn't, this annexation includes both property and right-of-way, the property on the north side will be incorporated into the East Airport Road extension, while annexation of the south property, which is Porter Park, will allow development of the park to be under city regulations instead of county regulations, so there's a certain advantage to that. And again, we've mailed notice of this request to adjacent owners, affected agencies, received no comments. Again, Exhibit B of your adoption ordinance contains the specific criteria and findings, I'll note this land is located within the UGB, we have, it is adjacent to the city limits, we certainly see this as important for urban development, again, the parcel on the north will help with the extension of East Airport, and the side on the south is part of our park system. Finally, all necessary services to serve properties are located within Russell Drive. Upon annexation, the property on the north will be rezoned to mixed use, and the Porter Park property will be rezoned to residential mixed density. For the record, parks are allowed within the residential mixed density zone. Again, Plan Commission found the annexation request complies with the criteria, and recommends city council approval of the annexation application and establishment of the respective mixed use and residential mixed density zones. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions concerning the staff report.
Questions? Thank you Walt.
Okay, thank you Mayor.
Applicant testimony, would the applicant like to speak?
Sure. I concur with Walt's staff report, if there's any questions you have about the, why we're annexing, I'd be more than happy to annex.
Thank you. Are there any proponents of the, proponents testimony that would like to speak for the Or is there anyone that would like to speak against the annexation? Opponents? Okay, see none, we'll close the public testimony, all further discussion will be limited to the council and city staff. Council discussion? See none, have the city attorney read the ordinance.
Ordinance Bill number 2016-10, ordinance number 2879, a bill for an ordinance annexing and zoning property following consent filed with the city council by landowners in said area pursuant to ORS 222.120 and ORS 222.170, planning file 16-02-09, City of Lebanon.
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number 2879, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion passes. This hearing is now closed, I'd like to thank everyone for attending tonight's hearing. Next up, we'll move into the regular session, and first item up is residential accessory structures, and we'll have Walt Windelowski, our Community Development Director, speak.
You know, at the Rotary Meeting, if you see a person this much, there'd be a fine for it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Get out the bucket.
Oh.
I will be prepared for the next one. As you recall, last month, we had a request by the public looking at the issue of the placement of a transportation container as a, as an accessory structure. The city council directed staff to look at, you know, provide some background on accessory structures, possibly some points of discussion and recommendation, and hope the following is some assistance. In the staff report, you will find an attachment that I've highlighted in yellow, areas that look at quantitative requirements, basically just to support the, the staff report. I will note that while every zone allows accessory structures to some degree, I'm going to focus on the residential zone, which is really the center of the discussion. Briefly, just to provide a brief summary, any residential zone would allow a accessory structure up to 1,000 square feet in area, you know, higher than 25 feet with only a building permit, that's the only requirement. If you're greater in size or taller, you require what's called an administrative review. I will note, though, you cannot exceed the maximum limit of the underlying zone, so we do have that ultimate control. Also, in combined with the existing residence, accessory structures cannot exceed what we call a allowable lot area. For example, in the residential low density, no more than 40% of the lot can be covered with structures, so if you have a 10,000 square foot lot, the home and the accessory building cannot exceed 4,000 square feet in area. Also, there are setback requirements, while dwellings have, say, a 20-foot rear yard setback, an accessory structure only has a 10-foot, and if it's located further than 60 feet from the street, the setback can be reduced to as much as three feet. Every residential lot must have a rear yard, again, it has to be at least 20 feet in depth, and the area of this required yard is the depth times the lot width, and within that area, you can, the accessory building can occupy no more than 35% of that area. So, we, every time a building permit comes in, we look at these factors to determine whether or not the accessory structure can be allowed. Now, one other note, and I think I touched on this briefly, but these are accessory, these are accessory to the primary use of the property, so before you even have an accessory structure, you need to have a single-family home, and so you just cannot have a vacant lot and put a garage on there, so that connection is made. Now, this is where it gets interesting, the question was, can they put that 40-foot container on the property as an accessory structure? And my short answer, without knowing all the details on lot size or anything, is yes. These containers are generally eight feet in width, which means that this is about a 320-square-foot structure, which is certainly below the 1,000-square-foot before you need to get into a staff review, they're generally eight to 10 feet high, so it certainly meets that requirement, and unless the lot is usually very narrow, I cannot imagine it not meeting lot area coverage, setbacks, and all the other quantitative measures we use to place these. All that the applicant would need to do is just get a building permit and place it on a suitable foundation. So, we make no distinction, the structure is a structure, and as long as they can get a building permit for it, we're fine. Now, again, these are quantitative measures that I've been discussing, and I think the issue is really one that is more of qualitative nature, do we really want to see a container in the backyard of our neighbor? And that's a completely different question. Now, I think the council has some options here, and, and please understand that every time you put something on paper and you go through it about the umpteenth time, there's always things you wish you can change a little bit. You know, one option obviously is to do nothing, and I don't mean that to be dismissive, but I'm just saying, for the last 15 years, we've only had two cases where someone has come in with a container and to get a building permit. So, from just a purely administrative standpoint, this has not been a big issue for the department. Another option for the council to consider is simply to restrict the use, simply say it won't be allowed. Not only, while it can meet all the other quantitative measures, let's face it, if you see the containers on the trains or on the trucks, they're brightly colored, they have graphics, they really don't fit in with a, within a residential area, maybe an industrial area, but certainly not a residential area. I think it's also important to note, excuse me, that the city does not have any aesthetic or design requirements for residences, and so, we do not make these limitations in terms of what can be used for an accessory building. The only places that would have such restrictions are subdivisions that have deed covenants or some other restrictions, so, in other words, the roof has to be of a certain type and that sort of thing. But again, that's, those, those are not controlled by the city, that is a private matter. That is a private matter. The third option I'm thinking is that you can establish some standards. It's not unusual for cities to do so. I've worked with communities that were only 2,000 or 3,000 in population that did have such standards. I think this is, you know, you have some difficulty here. A couple of points I'd like to note is that, you know, you have to be very clear about what you mean by a residential finish. If the house has lap siding and they want to put up T-111, is that close enough? And, you know, just a couple of things to think about. Also, pole barns are not necessarily residential in appearance. We've not had any issues with neighbors complaining about a pole barn being put up. This has not been a problem, but they usually have vertical siding, and they're metal and finished, and that's definitely not residential. Also, note that these standards can only be enforced through our building permit process. You can go to Home Depot or Lowe's, I probably should say you can go to Lowe's, forget Home Depot, and just pick up a metal shed that will not need a building permit, but doesn't match the exterior trim of your home. And also, I think on a related issue of aesthetics, I think proximity is an important matter. If you're in a single-family area or a, say, smaller lot type of a subdivision, what's in the backyard can make a big deal of difference if, versus having a piece of property that's on the fringe and one acre in size. I mean, there's just two completely different aesthetics going on here. As I noted, in the last 15 or so years, we've had, you know, only two issues, instances where we've gone through building permits on these. And I think what we're really looking at is a qualitative measure here. And again, I'm not trying to dismiss the concerns of the neighbors. I'm just saying purely from an administrative standpoint, it has not been a process issue for the city. I'm suggesting, though, if the council wishes to pursue this, I just have a couple of suggestions, and, and I could always, and obviously, the Planning Commission would take it from there, is keep the rules simple, easy to understand, be flexible in how you look at the matter of a residential finish. Above all, avoid the issue of color. I can't think of anything that would be more dramatic in terms of a conflict. Exempt structures that do not require a building permit. You know, we just don't, the, the enforcement problems would be enormous. I would also consider exempting such structures as greenhouses or those temporary carports. They still require a building permit, but there's no way you're going to make them really residential in appearance. And also, I'm thinking there might be some break in terms of parcel size, or density, or some other factor. Probably need to think about that a bit more, where the rules would be less restrictive. Again, any changes that need to be made will be through our development code. That will require a hearing before the Planning Commission and come back to council. Realistically, I think the earliest we can come back with any recommendation would be August or September. With that, I will be happy to answer any questions you may have or discuss any issues, and I will proceed as so directed.
I want to say that the subject of this discussion is gone. That container has been moved. So I didn't see it there. Part of the gentleman's issue was how tall it was. But it was up on its axles, and he didn't want to, he didn't want the gentleman to, to put it down either. So, and I had, I had said last time, I'm not a big fan of government telling me what I can do with my property. So I like to limit that, if at all possible. If I want to have something hideous in my backyard, that's subjective. And I have had to look at hideous things in other people's backyards. So that having been said, the, what I thought was possibly the, the legitimate argument that he had was that they were treated with chemicals, and that that posed a neighborhood danger. Is that legit?
Hard to say. Depends what it was used for. The building inspector or building official would have to go through that issue as part of the permit process. Again, this is certainly over 200 square feet, would be subject to a building permit, and that would be something our official would look at. That's not, that's not something I've heard of directly, but it would be something that we'd certainly look at.
All right.
Yeah, I agree that I don't think, you know, the whole aesthetic thing is, you know, then we start saying, can you not paint your house purple? You know, and it's not our job, I don't think, as, as a city, to, to say how people's houses should look and what they can have in their backyard.
Go really too far really fast.
Yeah.
Robert?
I may have missed in your comments, but I remember, I thought I remember some discussion about some examination of what was going on in other cities. You were going to do some comparative review of that.
I did not do that because, I would do that if you wanted me to go forward. This is all over the dance floor. Some cities have very strict requirements in terms of square footage, building height, setbacks, exterior finishes. Before coming here, I was consulting with 11 small communities in the, further up the valley, mostly in Yamhill County, and some of them were very strict. Some folks had to actually take a pole barn and take off the siding and replace it with horizontal lap siding. I mean, they were very strict. So it gets to be, you know, it just depends. If you wish me to go forward, I would certainly look at some, all, you know, choices out there to consider.
I think we're in pretty good shape just the way it is. I don't see any need to go any further. It's my opinion.
Yeah, and the amount of, of activity that it sounds like has happened, and this issue that has been brought up isn't even an issue anymore.
Yeah.
Apparently, right? It's gone.
I, I drove by there, and, and not to say he couldn't bring it back.
Yeah.
Maybe he's waiting for a decision from council, but it is no longer there at this point.
And how many did you say? Two?
Two in the last 15 years.
Fifteen years?
Yeah. I think the issue with that one was certainly it was up on wheels.
It was not attractive. I'll, I'll grant them that. It was tall and hideous.
And once you drop it on a foundation, it's only eight or 10 feet high, which is, you know, a standard sort of shed, tool shed type of height.
Far below 25 feet.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I suggest that there's an absence of a problem at this point in time.
Floyd?
I could go with that, yes.
Okay. Sounds like we'll just leave it as it is and address it later if it becomes an issue.
And I will hold on to the staff report.
Thank you very much. Number five, Transportation Growth Management Program for Transit Development Plan, IGA. Kendra?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I'm here to present on the intergovernmental agreement with the Department of Transportation. I mentioned this when we had our budget meeting last week, and you've probably seen, seen some of the updates that have come through on the department manager reports. ODOT approached us in the fall, said that they had some planning dollars available. They had known that our dial-a-bus, the ridership, has gone up over 38% over the last four years, and that we need some sort of change, a new mode of service, if you will, more efficient, can accommodate more riders. And so they were wanting us to go through the process of doing a transit development plan. They found the planning dollars. The timing is good because Walt is currently going through his transportation system plan update. And so going through those processes at the same time is a good idea, and the transit development plan would become a piece of the TSP as well. So to go along with the intergovernmental, intergovernmental agreement is the scope of work, and that includes a public input process. So along with Walt going through his public input processes for the TSP update, we would be doing the same thing for the transit development plan. Ultimately, they would come up with a service design for this new system for the dial-a-bus, a loop, if you will, a deviated fixed route of some sort, which would be making some loops through town to help accommodate more riders. They'll also look at sustainability, what other funding might be out there and available. They'll look at marketing and branding for the service. A lot of people aren't aware that we actually have a dial-a-bus, or they think that it's for, it's not open to the general public, but indeed it is. Right now, about 5% of our rides are the general public, which is 60 and younger. The other 95% are seniors and those with disabilities. And they'll also come up with a short and long-term strategic plan for the dial-a-bus. So it's definitely a good thing. Timing is good. Also, I had mentioned that they're going to look at the funding piece. I mentioned last week in our budget meetings that we still had two outstanding grants that we hadn't heard back on. One I had just heard back on that day, which was for the purchase of a new vehicle that will accommodate up to four wheelchairs. And the other one that I hadn't heard back on, but did on Friday, is the operations piece for this new system that we're proposing. So funding is available for the next two to three years. And if approved, I'll give City Council an update with a timeline and when we'd be looking at implementing that new service.
Awesome.
Any questions?
Very exciting to have a, a loop.
It is.
You know, some, I've often thought we needed that. So, good job. I'm, I'm excited.
Thank you, thank you. We did have one back in 2000, 2001, 2002, but we had some budget constraints and had to scale back on our drivers. I wasn't there then, but, you know, some of the people, like at the Oaks and Brookdale and such, they said that the people really liked it. They liked to know that, oh, guess what? The bus is going to be here at 10:00, 11:30, 12:30, and so on, and they can just count on that. So it is exciting.
Very good.
That's awesome.
Is there, has the route even been looked at, or is that still, that's like way out?
We have, we, as in I and my drivers, have gone out and, and mapped some places that we would like to stop, that obviously are popular places to stop. And so we have an idea of how we'd like it to look, but certainly, as we go through the public input process, and ODOT and their consultants are looking at it, it may look a little bit different than what we have.
It'd be interesting to see what the public has to comment on.
Will be.
It's interesting, I had, and I've never had this before, but I had a customer actually use the dial-a-ride to stop by the shop and drop off a computer the other day.
Thanks.
So it was kind of neat, yeah. It was really neat. It was his only way of transportation.
That's great.
It's awesome.
And it's awesome that it includes marketing to get the word out because...
Not everybody knows that it's available.
It is, yeah.
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 Good.
Well, it'd be nice.
Okay, any other questions? Call for a motion?
I'd move for approval.
Seconded. It's been moved and seconded to approve the Transit Development Plan intergovernmental, intergovernmental agreement. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? The motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kendra. Okay, at this point, we'll temporarily adjourn as the City Council and convene as the Urban Renewal Agency Board. Dean Baugh, Urban Renewal Agency Board Reimbursement.
So, as you know, Ron's in the process of doing a lot of projects over in the airport road area. Airport Road, Russell Drive, water park, or water plant, and Porter Park. So as part of this, we're looking at issuing a bond sometime in the fall, you know, as once we get all the bugs worked out of all this. What this resolution does is allow us to go back 60 days from today and catch costs backwards, and then going forward up until we issue the bond, what we're looking at is borrowing money to start some of these projects, get some of them going. And then, once, if we pass this resolution, this will allow us to reimburse the city for our cost out of the bond when we issue it this fall. That's basically all this is doing. It's kind of a, a placeholder for us to, if, if, if things fall in line and projects get, start happening, we can reimburse ourselves when we get out to the point of issuing the bond. I don't know if Gary wanted to say more, because there's, there's kind of a lot happened today with this that we're looking at, so.
Our, our best hope for the projects would be that we'd be able to construct the community garden beginning in August, September or so, and work into the fall and complete it with the Russell work happening next year. I say that's our best hope because there's a lot of moving pieces. For example, we very like who will be coming to you with some amendments to the Cheeto Lake Urban Renewal District Plan to update it to be specific to the projects that we're looking at over the next two years. The plan was put together, I think, in 2000 or 2002, but some time ago.
15 years ago.
And so the, the folks who put that together did their best to try to see into the future what the projects would be. For example, the, the airport road extension was envisioned, but in a different alignment and so forth. So there are some adjustments to the plan that we have to make. There are various deadlines within state law that we have to meet in doing that. So there's a chance we won't be able to build the, the garden in the fall, but passing this resolution now helps us. Like Dean says, it's a placeholder now, so that if other things fall in place, we'll be ready to move forward. So if we come back to you and say, we weren't able to pull everything together, this probably wasn't necessary today, but we'd like to preserve our, our ability to, to move forward if we can. If there are any questions, I'll be happy to respond to those.
And there's no negative impact on the budget or anything?
No, there's not.
Yeah.
Other questions? Okay, thank you, Dean. And we'll have the resolution read by the city attorney.
Resolution Number 2016-11. A resolution of the City of Lebanon Urban Renewal Agency, Oregon adopting a statement of official intent to reimburse capital expenditures from the proceeds of a borrowing reasonably expected to be entered into by the agency.
Move for approval.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution 2016-11. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The resolution passes. Thank you, Dean. I will reconvene as the Lebanon City Council. We'll adjourn as the Urban Renewal Agency Board. Next up is Dean with Finance, Finance Director, Supplemental Budget Amendment.
When we, when we prepare the budget each year, we try our best, like, like Gary said with the, the plan, to look forward, know what we have to do. There are things that come up throughout the year that we didn't plan on. So what, what we do is we set aside contingency money. The way the state of Oregon is, to, before you can spend contingency money, we have to come back with a supplemental budget, move it out of contingency, and move it into a line item. So that's what we're doing here. There's a few items that had come up. First one was, they had an asbestos problem at City Hall. And so they came in and did some abatement. It turned out to be like a $25,000 bill that we need to take care of, but we've got the contractor on hold until we get money put in the budget to pay him. So he'll be glad when we get this approved. Let me go, oops. So that's City Hall. Next one, if you remember, we, we did a bond last fall. After we did the budget, we did a, a bond refinancing. That moved away some, moved around the way some of our financing is. So what this is doing is moving some money from Fund 470, because we refinanced a wastewater bond as a full faith and credit. So now the bond shows in our debt service funds. This is moving the budget from the 470, I talk with my hands, you're following, moving it from 470 up to 314, so we can pay, so we can pay those debt payments. The, the same thing with the next one, the 111,000. When we issue the bond, they send us the, there's bond proceeds that they send to us to pay out the bonding cost. We, we pay the bond attorney, a whole bunch of other little things we have to pay. So this is basically budgeting that bond, bond money, and then authorizing us to spend it on those bond, those bond costs. The next one is the same thing, moving money around from one line to another line based on that refinancing. Third one, 470, same thing, again, refinancing. That's where we're taking the money out of 470 to move it up to the other one. That's where we're taking the money out of 470 to move it up to the other one. The next one is an 820, that this is a project you guys are excited about, because this is money we had been setting aside for the last few years for Jason to work on River Park. So he's working on that, and now we need to move it out of contingency, so he can finish spending the money. So that's all we're doing here, is taking it out of the park contingency and putting it in a park line item, so Jason can spend that to finish up that River Park, the River Park gazebo and stuff. The other one here, Kendra had some issues at the senior center about with some sound system, they had to do some upgrading and some repairs, so she worked with Brent and got some cost. So this is moving money out of her contingency up to her line item, so they can upgrade the sound system at the senior center. And the last one is just an item I noticed when I was doing the budget, kind of to keep this account from going over budget at year-end, is all that was. So that's what we found, a few items, nothing real major. Most of it's kind of exciting things that happen with the financing, saving us money, getting the River Park done. This is kind of moving the money where it needs to be, so we're okay at the end of the year with the auditors. So, that would be the staff report. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Questions?
I like being okay with the auditors.
Okay, have the city attorney read the resolution, please.
Resolution number 2016-12. A resolution authorizing a supplemental budget amendment to the City of Lebanon 2015-16 budget.
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution 2016-12. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Resolution passes. Number eight, sale of surplus property. Ron Whitmitch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. What we have before you tonight is an offer to buy a parcel of our previously, what do I want to say there, where we declared it a surplus property back in 2010. Mr. Steve Robinson has submitted a request, or actually a proposal, to pay $1,000 for this property. The property sits off of Williams Street, right next to the railroad tracks and right across from A Street. It's encumbered by his garage, which has been there for many, many, many years. If we were to look at trying to get other people to actually bid on it, we would have to give him an easement for what he has there, thus making the property pretty much never going to happen. Yeah, so. But in the past, the city manager, back in the ordinance, back in, or the resolution back in 2010, gave the city manager authority to negotiate up to 60% of RMV. Right now, or as of February, the RMV was $12,500. Mr. Robinson has submitted a proposal of $1,000, and staff's opinion, this is probably just as well, let's get it off of our city books, we don't maintain it, and give him his property, and move forward. He's also in the audience, if you have any questions for him, or I can answer any questions that you may have.
Ron, can you explain, the highlighted in yellow is the property to be sold?
Yes, correct.
And which one is his actual property? Is it the 8200?
So, if you're, his would be the 8200.
8200, okay.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, that's what I thought, but I just wanted to make sure. Other questions?
Is the 8400 also surplus property?
Yeah, I think that, actually, looking at that, let me look at that 8300 is where it's primarily, that's, we're kind of showing where his garage is, 8400 goes with that, yes, as well. It's that whole thing.
That whole thing is what we're negotiating tonight.
Yes.
8300 or 8400?
They've been declared as surplus property, yes. Both of those. And I think that's maybe a misprint on there, I'm not sure on that map, just sitting here looking at it and looking what we declared surplus, that you bring that up. Not sure where there's two tax lots there, because our limbs only shows one.
And our resolution would reflect...
Actually, what, your resolution was in here, and it shows 8300.
Right.
Back from then. What we would do is prepare a quitclaim deed with whatever we have entitled, may not be much, and just deed that over to him that way. But it does, it but the railroad right away. This map may or may not be correct, I'm not sure where it came from. Because if you look at, look at our newest tax maps, which I did before I came over, it showed it a little bit different.
The 83 was the last one.
That's, yeah, that's all it showed.
Okay.
That was a good catch, I didn't look at that map.
We did, because that's what you gave us.
What's that?
I said, "We did, because that's what you gave us."
Yeah, yeah, sometimes I don't get to see those when they go out.
The assessor value that comes out here, that just comes straight from the county?
Yeah, yeah. We checked the real market value based on the assessor, and it was $12,500 back in February.
In a million years, we couldn't sell it.
No, no. I think $1,000 is a pretty fair offer, since his garage encumbers that right now. We'll never use it for anything, there's no utilities down there. This is probably a good thing to get cleaned up.
I like it.
Any other questions? Okay, seen none. Do I have a motion?
You got a resolution.
No, it's just a motion.
Just a motion?
Mm-hmm.
I moved.
It does say a resolution at the top, though.
No, no.
Oh, that's the old one? Okay.
Basically, what we're looking for is a motion from council to move forward with a $1,000 offer, and put a quitclaim deed together, and deed the property to him.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and...
It's declared by resolution.
Gotcha.
Okay.
It's been moved and seconded for the sale of surplus property. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion passes.
Thank you, we will get this taken care of.
Number nine, collective bargaining contract for ASME. Gary Marks.
Good evening, members of the council, Mr. Mayor, members of the public and staff. I'm truly pleased to present our new contract with our ASME union. I'm pleased because I think the past negotiations over the last few months served as a demonstration for the state of our relationship with our union, and that state of relationship is excellent. We met four times, three of the meetings were two hours in length, the final one was three hours, as we hammered out the final details. So, nine hours of discussion about the next three years that are covered by the contract. Those nine hours, I think, were characterized by constructive problem-solving, mutual respect, and good faith on both sides. And we, we settled on a contract with some changes on it, and I don't think there was anything too major, and I'll just run through these. There's an updated memo that was passed out ahead of the meeting that updates the one that you have in your packet. Four major, if you want to call them major, but four areas of change over the prior agreement. The first one was that we agreed to add a healthcare advisory committee, which brings three members of the ASME union and three members of the exempt staff together, with the city manager as the seventh member, the chair, non-voting except in the event of a tie, to discuss any major change that we may be contemplating. It's an advisory committee only, it doesn't have the ability to actually make healthcare coverage decisions, but we feel it's an important avenue to involve our staff. The, our other union, which covers the police, are not part of the insurance program, the insurance program that covers ASME and the exempt staff is separate from the union that covers the police. So that's why it's just ASME and the exempts on this committee. So, anyway, I'm looking forward to working with that group, to try to build consensus about how we make changes going forward. We also simplified the sick leave and vacation incentive calculations that were in the prior contract. They were unbelievably complicated and convoluted, and what we actually did is we brought them in line with the same processes we have for the exempt staff. So it streamlined that whole process. I think that's going to work much better for everyone and increase the employees' ability to understand where they stand with these benefits. On the wage increases, it is a three-year contract. Each year, there's a range of potential increases, which is covered on page 19 of the agreement. First year, which is the year that we're about to start with the budget that was just approved, it will be, the increase would be not less than 1% of the CPI, and not more than 3%. Right now, it's running extremely low, near zero. I would anticipate that's actually going to be 1%. In 2017, which would be fiscal 18, the bottom would be 1.5, the top 3, and in the final year of the contract, the floor would be 2%, and the top would be 3. So, in the event, say, the CPI was higher than 3% in any of those years, it would be capped at 3%. So, in addition to that, we restructured the career recognition pay, that's the longevity pay in the contract. We really didn't change the expense of that program. The union was interested in having the recognition happen more often in smaller amounts. Dean did the math on what they proposed, and it was pretty much a wash. It was just a different way of structuring it. So, we didn't find any reason not to go along with that. It was something that seemed very important to them. So the contract, like I said, runs between July 1 of this year, and will expire on June 30 of 2019. The union members have already reviewed and have ratified the contract, so the only thing that stands between this agreement and full implementation is the City Council. And I would, with a very strong, a very strong recommendation, I would advise that you would approve this agreement. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to respond to those.
This is an outstanding agreement, I think, rewards our staff for the quality that they're demonstrating on a day-to-day basis, and is a fiscally sound contract for the city. Recommend approval.
I'll second it.
Was there any discussion? Any other questions?
No.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to approve the ASME contract. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Last, city manager's report. Gary Marks.
Well, you have my report in your packet, I'll just highlight one item. I think most of the council is aware that we have a transload facility back behind, it would be behind INTEC. As you're going down 34, you can turn off there to go into Lata Creek, and there's a road, once you're driving directly at Lata Creek, that goes off to the left. If you took that road and follow it all the way down to the end, you would come to a broad paved area with the railroad track coming in and dead-ending there. That was built a few years back using state grant money. It's a place where the railroad can come in and load things from one railcar to another, or from a truck onto the, onto the rail. With the closing of Terminal 6 in Portland, the state has seen a significant increase in truck traffic on I-5, and ODOT is interested in finding some solutions for that, because whereas freight used to be able to go directly to Portland to be shipped out, right now, it has to go either to the facility in Tacoma, or go down to the facility in the Bay Area in Northern California. So, it has been identified that Lebanon is a logical place for an expanded transload facility. We evidently have one of only three rails in the state, where both major railroads are in agreement that they can use that rail. The only other two, one's in Portland, and one's, I think, in Roseburg. So we are ideally located with rails that can be accessed by both major railroads. And so there's a great interest from the state, and from a lot of our local industry. I attended a meeting, I think about three weeks ago now, where members of industry, members of the state, and myself and Walt were in attendance, and there's a lot of, there's a lot of interest, a lot of money behind this project, and even ideas being considered now to create a Port of Lebanon, which would be an international port, which would give us some notoriety. But we're looking at the property right there in the same vicinity of the existing transload facility. It would need to be expanded, probably three or four more spurs would be branched off of the main line. So I'm excited about this, I think it opens up some opportunities for us, particularly for our existing industrial users in the immediate vicinity. They are extremely interested in this. For example, those sees great value in having this facility, because they can immediately take their empty containers and bring them over to the transload facility, which would be next door. So it's a great benefit to them, and so I just wanted to let you know that this is in the works. Industry has all pooled funds together, they've hired an attorney in Salem, who, Kevin Mannix, who used to be a, he was a gubernatorial candidate, I guess, a decade ago or so. And Kevin is moving forward on a number of fronts to organize this. So you will be hearing more about this Lebanon transload facility. You may even be asked to take some action if it's demonstrated that a port authority would be of benefit to this facility. So, just another thing that's going to be putting us on the map.
Would the city be a party to that port, or would they be the controlling entity?
The port would be the governing authority on the, on the transload facility, but there would certainly, in the creation of that port authority, as I understand it now, the city council would have a role in that creation. So, you'll hear more going forward, I'm sure. I don't think this is something that will go away. Even if, even if Terminal 6 were to open now, the fact that they've begun to look at this, that it's been identified that regardless if Terminal 6 is open or not, this makes a lot of sense for particularly industry in the Central Valley area. So I would look for this to actually come forward and happen. And one of the things that excites me most about it is it, it gives us one more benefit to attract industry here, that we have easy access to rail, to both major rails. There really aren't any communities in the southern, or in the Central Valley that can say that. So, we were sitting on a great opportunity, and I think, I think you'll see, this is going to come about.
I think so. Isn't there another meeting coming up here towards the end of the month over in Albany?
Over in Albany, yes, the Port of Portland.
I think, yeah.
That's not specifically on this, but it's related, yes.
It's related, yeah.
Yeah.
We had an economic development meeting, the Chamber Economic Development meeting, about two months ago.
Yeah.
And there were a couple people from the state there.
Yeah.
And it was interesting what they were saying, and one of the things, because Shelley Garrett had said, "Well, is Lebanon considered, because we're just so perfectly situated?" And one of them kind of slipped and said, "Well, we've had a hard time not calling it the Lebanon Project."
Yes.
Which was very interesting, because, again, we're one of the few places, because they can handle BNSF and, what's the, UP, both out of our rails here, it's one of the few places in the whole state that can do that. So, it was really interesting.
Off both lines, too.
Yeah.
So, there are, there's not any other discussion on that. I want to call your attention to the fact that you've been provided a copy of our updated employee handbook at the May 25 noon meeting. This will be on the agenda for your review and approval. We wanted to get this to you in advance, so you'd have a chance to look at it. Our exempt staff has spent the last several months going through the existing handbook and updating it. There's several areas where we streamlined it to make it more practical and workable for staff. I feel very good about what we've done here, and would look forward to your comments on May 25, but wanted to make you aware of why this is in front of you this evening. If there are any other questions, I'd be happy to respond to those. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Gary. Items from council? Items from council?
I just wondered if there's any further discussions that you can share, chief, with the school district concerning the school officer?
To excuse my voice. Seems like allergies are getting the best of me today for some reason. Yes, we've, I've actually had a good discussion with both Dr. Hess and Bo Yates last week. It seems like it was two weeks ago, but last week. And it appears from what they are telling me that they were able to find the thirty thousand dollar shortfall that we've been discussing in some other aspects. I think from the, from PERS and from ESD or something along those lines. So at this point, everything is looking, that we'll be able to proceed as usual. So I have another meeting scheduled with him tomorrow at eleven o'clock, which we should be able to finish and wrap things up from that, from that standpoint. So it's very, very positive news. And very, very glad that Dr. Hess and Mr. Yates wanted to be very proactive with me and open up that conversation, so.
Great.
Yeah, it went really, really well, so.
Thank you.
I just had a question, Gary, for you. How are we coming on the wetlands issue? Have we made any moves forward?
Walt and I are continuing to work on that project. I'm not sure there's much to report at this point. We've got a consultant now working on the first phase of the reassessment of the wetlands. I think I described it the last meeting. It's a two-phase project. He'll come back this fall when it, when it's wet again and do the final part of that analysis. We've been working with the state and still we're waiting for some responses back from them on the funding for the other piece of the strategy, which it's all delineated here in my manager's report. The redelineation and then the, the analysis of what our options might be to address the expense. And that's, that's really the biggest one, because, you know, I've mentioned it before, it's seventy thousand dollars per acre credit. And if you have a big industrial user wanting to come to town and they need eighty acres and two-thirds of them need to be mitigated, you know, that's a whole lot of money that you add to the upfront or the all-in expense of acquiring the property. So the answer is yes, we're continuing to move forward on it. No, I don't have any benchmark accomplishments to report at this moment.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
I have two things. One, if you haven't seen the new city website, you need to go to the city website and just take a gander at it. I had an issue personally that I was thinking about, and I wanted to look something up. And I went in there and typed in two words, and I found the actual, not the ordinance, but the actual page that I didn't even know existed. It was amazing. The search engine and the way that that website is designed is so easy to find things. And I think once public starts using it more, it's going to be pretty amazing. If you don't find something and you're looking for an ordinance, like I was typing in chicken and different things, like trying to find one of the laws, and when I did that, it didn't find anything, but all you have to do is go over to the legislative side where there's, all the, all the laws are there, and you just type in that, and it comes right up. You come chicken, chicken, anything that mentions a chicken. Or whatever that noise ordinance or whatever it is. So you can, you can find the laws, you can find the ordinances. It's quite good. And the reason I was looking that up was because I was driving down the street the other day on Main Street, and I saw the trees. The trees on Main Street looked terrible.
Yeah.
They got chopped. And I don't know what the, what the situation is, so I wanted to bring that up to Gary. But what I did was I put in tree ordinance, and it actually popped up a page. We have a page back in two thousand and two, when I was on the Parks and Tree Committee, where we created all the ordinances and all the paperwork is in there. It's amazing how detailed it is. And it has this one document about how trees should be taken care of, and it says, "Tree topping removes a major portion of a tree's top by cutting large branches off of stubs. Topping is a poor practice and is not recommended. Topping a tree may reduce property value, shorten the lifespan of trees, and make a tree safety hazard large stubs provided by topping." And those trees have been topped, and those were specifically when I was on the Parks and Tree Committee. We got those trees so that they're columnar, so that they would grow up next to the buildings, and that was on purpose. And if you look at them, they're just, they're kind of mangled. And so I don't know if you can address that, Gary, but I was not able to.
One morning this past winter, I was driving to work, and I come down Main Street every morning, and I was horrified. I don't, I don't know. I can't, I can't say that there's a good reason why that happened. It was something that, that our maintenance staff did. And I think at this point, we need to learn from that and move forward. I would actually love to see the policy of the city be that before we, we do pruning on our trees, that we do it in coordination with a certified arborist. Those folks are out there and understand the maintenance of trees, and I actually think it's called out in our Tree City USA standards. I'm not certain that it's, it's actually our policy. But if the council were to agree with that stance, it would actually help me. I'm one who places great value on trees, and I was, I have to be honest, I was simply horrified when I saw what happened. They have started to leaf out now, so they don't look quite as.
That's why I noticed them. I didn't notice them when they were just the sticks, but.
Well, when they were, right after they were cut, there was no, no leaves on them. And a few of them were absolutely, they were just big logs that just were topped off. So I'm hoping there's a reasonable recovery on those trees. I'm not certain it will be. Trees seem to do strange things after they get topped like that, and they start growing new limbs off in odd directions and at strange angles.
I thought we had an arborist on staff, don't we?
No, no, we don't.
Thought we did.
No, no, we don't.
I'm in agreement with that, that I would love to see staff, you know, when it's public trees, you got to know what you're doing, and they're very important, so.
Do we know if this went through the Parks and Tree Board, or is that something that they deal with on a regular basis?
Actually, it's interesting that the mayor brings this up because it was the subject of discussion at the last Tree Board meeting. A couple of members brought it up and were concerned, just as the mayor is. If you haven't had a chance to go downtown and take a look, take a look.
Yeah.
So.
It's a lot more obvious with the, with the leaves, because like I said, I didn't see it during the winter until I just drove down now, and they're starting to really fill out.
I think if you'd seen them in the winter, it would have been obvious.
Okay. Yeah, I just didn't notice.
You don't always book up.
Yeah, that's true. That's true. Yes?
So, take a point of personal privilege. Some of you know I'm the president of Lebanon JBO Baseball. If any of you had a chance to go down, please go down and take a look at the new Bob Smith Park. Through a partnership with the Boys and Girls Club, the JBO Baseball, and a large part because of the city of Lebanon, we have been able to install turf around all of the home plates and turf on all of the mounds. As far as I know, we're the only, you know, I don't want to say Little League, because we're not Little League, but youth baseball program that has that kind of offering, and so far, the kids just love them. You should see these kids learning how to slide, coming into home, instead of doing it on dirt and kind of doing a skip hop and a rollover. These guys are sliding in there, you know, when they, when they have to and when they don't have to. The pitchers just love it. You have a perfect landing spot every time. It's absolutely fantastic. The kids are just loving. They are asking us when we're going to host more tournaments. Well, we are going to, again, host a state tournament here where we bring people, teams from around the state. And each year, you know, we've gotten something that's just a little bit better for them to enjoy. And not only did we get that, but we were able to complete all of the fencing. So we now have fully enclosed baseball fields, which helps because as we maintain these in such a high standards, making it really easy for, for bikes to go out there and jump, jump the pitcher's mound and ride their bikes around. And unfortunately, not all dog owners clean up their, their waste. Being able to fence those off was a big deal as well. So every year, it seems like for the last five or six years, we've seen to make an improvement in a big way and really becoming a destination spot for youth baseball. And that's a large part. I mean, I know you guys, nobody's come to you and said, "Hey, we want to do this," but in a large part because of the direction and the, and the ability that you've given your staff, Jason Williams and some of those guys, to make these types of improvements, put in for grants. It is making a huge difference. I mean, people want to come here.
I like the sign.
Yeah, I did that one.
What does it say?
It just says, you know, "These are kids. They're not professionals."
Coaches are volunteers.
"Coaches are volunteers. Umpires are human. None of these kids are going to get a pro contract today." Something like that.
Very good reminder.
Relax.
Very good. Anything else, council? Okay.
And I'm sorry, and I was going to finish up. I think we're going to be having an opening day celebration on May twentieth, where we're going to invite everybody, all the city councilors, mayor, just to come down. We always invite some huge sponsors to come down and throw out their first pitch. And what we were thinking is we'd really love representatives of the city to throw out a first pitch based on the improvements. But I got to double-check with Nick Brooks to make sure that we're going to make that happen on May twentieth. So we invite you all down if it happens.
Kind of last minute. I said, "That's kind of last minute." You said, "May twentieth?" Okay. Okay. Public comments? Another opportunity for the public to comment. Would anybody like to speak? Okay, go ahead.
Would you like to pass these out, please? I think I only have eight copies.
Then you got one for yourself.
I think I'll have eight copies. I know how much you've all missed me. So this has to do with veterans. And what it is, is if you look at the paperwork I have there, look down in the far corner where it says, it's called ghosting addicts, but what it has to do with is there are hundreds of military uniforms, and they're looking for a home. A place like out here at the Veterans, you know, maybe they have a place where they can display these uniforms. Now, I thought that what would be good is if the council would look into this and see if during Veterans Day, we could maybe contact these people and get some of the uniforms on display. Kind of like you have your strawberry princess dresses downtown, you know, that type of thing. And so that was my idea.
Have you contacted the Veterans Home? Because it sounds like it would be perfect.
Well, not yet.
Okay.
But I wanted to bring this up to the council and see what they thought about it, get some input.
I love this. This is awesome. I think that the, if you spoke to the director there, Kelly Odegaard is the person to communicate with over there. And I think they would be very interested in doing something like this. And they might even be doing something like this. I don't know. But I hadn't heard of it. But it's a, it'd be perfect for them. And they can partner with somebody else, maybe a storefront or something where they could put them in at some point in time, but that would be pretty neat. It's a great idea.
I, I retired bed. I got, I got this in my newsletter, and I just thought about that. Maybe it would be something we could look into. So I'll leave you with the copies, and you can.
Actually, I'd be happy to contact Kelly tomorrow and tell him of your, your visit with us and pass along this information.
Sure.
And a legion would be another.
Yeah, the American Legion would be another excellent.
They have so many. I mean, it'd be huge, I mean.
Okay. I think it's a very interesting project.
So that we have your, your contact information, too.
Thank you for bringing this, Tom. Appreciate it. Anyone else want to speak?
I'd like to also make a comment about how much, since we came here in nineteen fifty-nine, how much we've grown, how much things have changed for the better. I mean, Lebanon has really gone a long ways, come a long way since I came here in fifty-nine. It's just awesome.
Thank you.
And I understand we're having a bilingual. I think it's kid bilingual coming into Lebanon, which should be very interesting. Be downtown. And also, next time, if the doughnut shop goes in, I'll bring the doughnuts.
Right. Thank you.
I thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Anyone else would like to address council? Okay. Items from the press? Press is gone. Word, Jerry?